Being seven o'clock, we'd like to call our City Council of August 25 to order. And welcome to all of you that are here in person and those that are watching. I know we've had some problems with sound getting out over the cable network and we're attempting to fix that. Everything seems okay here in City Hall. If anyone is watching or listening, give us their feedback after tonight if they can hopefully hear us or not hear us. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilman Ziprak.
Present.
Councilman Popescu.
Present.
Councilman Peterson.
Present.
Mayor Protem Rigsby.
Here.
Mayor Brower.
Here.
All present.
We have been meeting in closed session since approximately 5:30 this evening. I will ask the city attorney to report on our items from closed session. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were three items in closed session, two on the City Council agenda. Item number one was a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation as identified in the agenda. This was the Save Loma Linda versus City and City Council case. And with regards to that matter, I do have an announcement. The announcement is that the City Council has approved this evening a final settlement agreement of that lawsuit for signature. And the vote tally on that was three in favor with one abstention and one absent. The council members voting in favor were Mayor Brower, Mayor Protem Rigsby, and Councilman Peterson, with Councilman Popescu abstaining. The substance of the agreement is that that entire lawsuit, we're pleased to report, will be dismissed with prejudice. The other terms of the agreement are set forth in a document that will become a public record and the city clerk would have copies available. In essence, the city agrees to continue to comply as it always does with the city's general plan, with the state law, and with Measure B, which is part of our general plan. The agreement also calls for payment of the sum of $98,000 in settlement to Save Loma Linda to cover their attorney's fees and costs. The agreement provides that there's no admission implied by the agreement that any of the allegations in the lawsuit have merit. But to summarize again, this is a settlement of a disputed claim. And upon payment and signature, that case will be dismissed. The agreement itself is final upon acceptance this evening. On item number two, we also had a conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. This was the Universal Self-Storage versus City case. In that matter, the council gave direction to city attorney and city staff. There's no final action reported this time. On the redevelopment agency agenda, item number one was a conference with real property negotiator. And the property is identified in the agenda. The negotiator for the city gave a report to the board, and there's no final action to report at this time. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Our invocation and pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Popescu.
Dear having the Father, thank you for being with us. I get the wonderful opportunity to not only serve the city but this community. We ask that you continue to bless us and guide us and watch over us as we decide decisions regarding the city. In his name, amen.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
This brings us to the part of the agenda for oral reports from the public on items that are not itemized on the agenda. I have a card and one other request that I'm aware of to speak during this time slot. The first one is from our chamber. We'd like to welcome Phil Carlisle to present some information and activities that are going on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I would just like to invite everyone to our new farmer's market on Wednesday night. Starting September 2nd, we're moving from Sunday mornings to Wednesday evening. We are excited about it. On Sundays, we had about 17 to 20 vendors. As it stands right now, we have confirmed 46 vendors for our new farmer's market. We have 12 farmers. We have 10 food vendors, which will offer a variety of vegetarian items, as well as other sweets and goodies and all kinds of good stuff. We have 12 crafters and the balance will be different information booths, such as the Loma Linda Coahuatlan Club and the Loma Linda Academy and others will be there. So we're excited. We're going to have a good market night. It's from 5:00 to 8:00. It's going to be here in the Civic Center parking lot. We invite you to come out to our ribbon cutting and grand opening at 5:00. And we're just going to have a good time and something that's going to be a family night for people. Bring your families out and have some fun. I'd like to give some thanks and some shout out to my chamber staff. Stephanie Mahay, our farmer's market coordinator, worked very hard on this, as well as Lucy Argüeta, our marketing coordinator. We wouldn't be where we're at if it wasn't for them. Like to thank our city manager, Jarvan, for his support and cooperation on this, as well as his executive assistant, Joanne, and some city staff that has helped us with this. So we're in good shape and we're going to have a very good farmer's market. We hope you'll be there. We hope everyone listening to tonight's broadcast will be there, as well as the rest of the community. So we're looking forward to it and thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. I think that's going to be a great improvement. We tried the Sunday morning slot and we're excited about that. And I think there are some good things about it, but decided that another time and so forth may be better. And it sounds like it's already yielding very positive results, so that's terrific. The first one isn't till September, correct? First Wednesday in September.
Since that's coming up, obviously, are there going to be two farmer's markets then next week or there won't be a Sunday one?
There will not be a Tuesday.
Okay.
Very good.
I just wanted to add, I think you all did a great job of announcing it, but I wanted to also extend an invitation to those in the community. I know that many of us, out of habit, have a tendency to kind of migrate east to Redlands for market night there on Thursdays. And we believe that we've been able to offer something similar and we hope the residents can spend their money and their time closer to home. And hopefully, any of those who, by some miracle, may be watching the City Council while at work, you know, there's many people who work in this community by the thousands who migrate out of here in the evening. And the goal here is that by moving it on the Wednesday evening, we'll increase the traffic and thereby not only bring more revenue, but also assist those who participate in selling their goods and expressing whatever information they want to express at the farmer's market. So once again, I'm excited. I think it's a great idea that we're moving it. It's a long time coming. I think it's a good opportunity for us to participate and I'm hoping that everyone else takes the time, if not this coming Wednesday, but the following Wednesday. And we'll try to kind of remind folks of it, because sometimes we forget about it. But hopefully, we'll get a good turnout. Thanks.
Under non-agenda items, also understand Manny Aranda has a few words for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Manny Aranda, Director of the San Bernardino Valley Water Conservation District. In the early part of June of this year, I appeared before this council and indicated to you that the water conservation district was involved in litigation. In fact, the litigation extended over four and a half years. And the whole purpose of that litigation was to take the conservation district out of the map, really, and turn it over just to one agency. And a hearing was held on July the 15th, and I'm pleased to report that consolidation was denied by the LAFCO board. And my purpose of being here is to thank this council and each of you for supporting us during that very expensive and very long trial. And I want to, on behalf of my board of directors, my general manager, all the consultants, thank you for supporting when we needed help. And we'll be here. We've been here 77 years. We plan to be here another 100 years. And during that time, our aim is to keep the water in this basin here and not to be taken outside. Again, I thank you for your support.
Thank you. Any other non-agenda items that anyone wishes to speak on? I don't have any other slips. If not, we will move on with our agenda as listed. Our first scheduled item, number three, is listed on the printed agenda. I will turn over to the city manager to announce some direction and a position that I think will be of a lot of interest and something that we're looking forward to. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am glad to announce that I have additional duty to our information system director, Conrad. That additional duty is the economic development directors. And this position is to help the city focus on the possibility to bring in new businesses and to increase the city revenue by increased sale tax and property tax in town. And Conrad was nice enough to do this without additional pay. So, thank you, Conrad.
Please, any words you'd like to share with the council this evening with always exciting to have more work and no more pay for it, right?
He got me on a weak moment. Actually, I'm excited about this. Loma Linda is a great community and we have relationships with the businesses, the institutions, people here in town that I think we're not taking full advantage of. And to really leverage what we have as this unique community and go into the future and really build something that really isn't anywhere else in Southern California, I'm very excited about this and thank you.
I'm really happy to see that because it's, I think it's a good choice in the fact that our intention, part of our intention in putting in this whole backbone IT system around the city was to make it attractive to that kind of business. This is just going to be a job that's going to mesh right into that. I think that's a very smart move. I appreciate that. Welcome.
And I would like that Conrad is a team player and he's really happy and willing to work with me and the rest of city staff, so I'm very anxious for it.
I just wanted to add my congratulations to the new position. I've had an opportunity to work with Conrad now for about a year since I've been elected and I've got to talk to him, mostly about fiber optics, but in getting to know him, I realized that he's a very knowledgeable person with lots of experience in the field beyond fiber optics. I truly believe that he is going to be an excellent addition to our team. He's already part of our team, now it's just a matter of giving him a few more responsibilities. And one of the things that he will be doing is, might as well make a formal announcement now, but he and I are going to be traveling to the ICSC conference in San Diego about a week from now. It's a one and a half days conference where a number of commercial developers get together, mostly from the West Coast. And there'll be a number of cities there marketing themselves and trying to attract commercial developers. And he and I will be attending that and we're actually have collaborated with San Marino County, which has a booth there. And they're going to be allowing us to display some information about Loma Linda to potential commercial developers in exchange for us manning their booths. So it's an opportunity to not only work with the county, but put Conrad to work right off the bat. And we hope that we can continue to foster relationships. One of the things that I have learned as of recent, Dr. Rigsby and myself attended the ICSC conference in Las Vegas back in May, and we met with a number of developers at that conference. And one of the things that I quickly learned is that there are lots of people to talk to. And sometimes you get information from them and then you come back and you talk to other people who've perhaps dealt with them. And slowly but surely, you can actually weed out some of the folks that you may actually not want to work with because of issues they've had in various cities. And we ourselves have had unfortunately negative experiences with some developers. And we hope to go to conferences like this and familiarize ourselves with various companies and get to know them, build relationships, and then later talk to other folks who've dealt with them. And this is how you build a network and you understand what they've done and what they can accomplish and how they can assist us. And it's a long, tedious process. I don't think that we're going to see anything significant happening anytime soon because of the economy. But however, we believe that we can prepare now by building some of those relationships and planning ahead. So once again, I appreciate Conrad's help with this and I'm looking forward to working with him.
Mr. Mayor, I want to also join in welcoming Conrad. I'm delighted we have someone like that doing the economic development part for our city. And one of the things that would be, I think, of great interest to those of us who are on the council, involved as chamber members, would be to get some insight from some of these conferences, what would be some of the best businesses for us to focus on trying to promote for a city such as this? Because we have unique characteristics, we have a large population during the day, a smaller one at night, and it might be useful to get some reports back as time goes along. Because I think a lot of people have been interested for years in what are the best natural attributes we have. We have things like the lopers, we have things like our hills, we have our university, things like that. But it would be useful to know what types of things outside commercial interests are looking at from a community like this that, when we're competing with all the cities around us.
Thank you. Just my final quick word on this item again. Congratulations as well. And the one thing I would like to express, I think those of us on the City Council, we may at times have different visions of certain types of development within the community, but I do think there's a unified focus without a doubt that long-term economically, we have to focus on commercial development. And I've seen efforts of every member on this council in that direction. Challenging economic times, we made some tough short-term reductions in expenses, but long-term, we recognize that some of these commercial developments are where we need to grow our revenues in the future. So I think this goes along with that consensus and that goal very nicely. So look forward to those activities. Next item is our consent calendar. I do see SBX corridor on here, and I know we've had this presented before, but I would guess might be another comment from Councilman Peterson, who's on OmniTrans.
I'll move the consent calendar with just a comment on number eight. We have Rohan here from OmniTrans and we're really excited about moving this thing forward. It's a long, complicated process to put something like this together, huge.
I'd like to second, second after you're done with your comments.
Obviously, everybody, I think, pretty much in America now is convinced that public transportation is the way that we have to go ultimately to get where we want to go in the end. And we're being, I think OmniTrans is being very proactive, foresighted in putting this in. This is only the first piece of a very large puzzle, which is going to include a lot of east, several east-west, major east-west corridors. You can get right on Loma Linda, get right down to the airport, down to Ontario, right down to Los Angeles, connecting with the trains and whatever. So we're, a lot of hard work, but very excited about it.
And I've heard the consent calendar seconded, I believe, with concurrence to support especially the efforts, as Councilman Peterson's mentioned on number eight. Any further comments, Councilman Popescu?
I just needed to pull item number five, which is our minutes. And I just wanted to clarify, at the last council meeting when we were voting on the budget, there was a little bit of confusion on my part as we were voting on various portions of it. And even though the minutes does reflect my vote, I just want to clarify that there was a motion made by Dr. Rigsby, which was seconded by Dr. Brower, to amend the original motion, which would give direction to staff to have a plan in place for a mid-year budget to close the mid-year budget deficit. And the record reflects that I opposed that and I meant to actually vote for it. And then after that, it was a motion to actually approve the overall budget, which was a motion by Mr. Ziprak and seconded by Mr. Peterson. And the record reflects that it was animously carried. However, I want to clarify that I meant to vote no on that, so I would be the lone vote against that particular motion.
Mr. Mayor, one thing I wanted to add on the SBX issue is we're working on a possibility of an Amtrak station here. And if that should work out, I'm just hoping that there's a possibility that there could be a little bit of coordination between the SBX and that if it worked out, because there'd be a possible connection between Amtrak here and the San Bernardino MetroLink, which could be important for SBX. It might add some volume. But that's something, I appreciate it's prematurely, premature right now to do that. But you're aware what we're working on, on that aspect, I trust, so thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, any comments on the minutes issue for item number five? Well, Mr. Mayor, I discussed this with Mr. Popescu and I've been rethinking that as I sat here. Typically, the minutes should reflect what was actually spoken and done at the meeting, although sometimes if there's an error in the transcription or summary, it's definitely appropriate to correct that and that's normally why we review the minutes. If there was just an error, inadvertence, and misspeaking, in the case of this item, the vote would not change the outcome. If it were changed, there's no due process implication. So if the councilman wished to have the minutes amended and if there's no objection to that upon reflection, I think that could be done. Or his statement in tonight's minutes would also serve the same purpose, to show his position on those items.
I have no problem with amending the motion, amending the minutes to reflect the changes as to my vote, if the council would approve that. That would be my motion.
I will again defer to City Attorney. I want to do what is most proper. I think it's obviously very clear what Councilmember Popescu's direction is, but I just, whatever, I want to follow whatever recommendation on the minutes that City Attorney recommends as being the clearest. Well, as I indicated, typically, if we have a due process matter where there was notice in the public hearing, we would be bound by what was actually spoken at the previous meeting. We could not reopen that and change the substance of the minutes to reflect something that was not spoken or did not occur at the previous meeting, the public hearing. The item in question is something that's more of direction to staff and the change in the vote would not affect the outcome of the action. So I think it's within the discretion of the council to amend the minutes to reflect what Councilman Popescu intended last meeting, even though he did not technically utter the words that he meant to speak that evening. So I would leave that within your discretion. If you feel comfortable amending the minutes, you may do so. City Attorney is indicating his concurrence with that potential direction. I've heard Councilmember Popescu move to amend the minutes as noted. It's up for discussion by the council and further direction. Mayor Protem?
I can attest to the fact that he voted by mistake, the way that it went, because the substance of his argument was against the budget and for my amendment. And I asked him immediately afterwards why he opposed my minute and voted for the budget against what he'd been saying. He said, "I didn't do that." Well, he did. He didn't intend to. So it was a complete inadvertency. And I support amending the minutes to reflect his actual intention.
So that's a second to the motion to amend the minutes. Further discussion from council or legal council, or Councilman Peterson?
Like you say, it wouldn't change the vote, but I'm worried about the setting up precedent in us saying one thing and, you know, having something happen even though it was inadvertent. I mean, I'm perfectly willing to let the comments stand the way they are tonight and the minutes tonight will simply solve the problem. I mean, that's a total solution, you know, without changing what actually happened. Once we start changing what actually happened, whether it was inadvertent or not, that's a little nervous.
Mr. City Attorney, do you care to respond or? Well, I have the same thoughts. And I think if it were a due process situation with an entitlement or whether, if it would change the outcome of the action, those concerns would certainly outweigh any other considerations. But in this particular case, my thought was if there's no objection, that it would be a no harm, no foul type situation to correctly reflect the actual thoughts. Councilman Ziprak?
Under Roberts' Rules of Order, if somebody made a mistake like that in a meat, because it could happen to any of us. What would be, what would be the way that would be handled?
Well.
If you caught it five minutes later?
We have not formally adopted Roberts' Rules of Order.
No, I understand.
But we generally follow the basics and that's common in most cities. There is a procedure under Roberts to make a motion to reconsider a prior action. And if that motion is made, it has to be made by somebody technically who was on the prevailing side of the original motion. And then the motion can be reconsidered. If the motion reconsider is passed by majority, then the most, the original motion is back on the table and can be revoted upon. Now, under Roberts, you can do that, but under the Brown Act, technically you can't because the prior matter is not on tonight's agenda for action.
Oh, I see.
Right.
So we could not reopen that matter. Theoretically, we could place it on a future agenda and there could be a motion for reconsideration brought by a member of the council who had voted in favor of the winning side of the motion. And if that passed, then there could be reconsideration. Mr. City Attorney, could I suggest something? And I don't think it's in Roberts' Rules of Orders from my reading of it, but would it be clearer and would it be acceptable to simply amend the minutes with an asterisk on that item to say, "See the minutes for the following meeting for comments" or whatever, and then have those comments entered into the minutes?
and then have those comments entered into the minutes of this meeting without quotes changing the previous minutes?
I think that'd be acceptable.
That sounds more sensible.
You could certainly do that.
Sure.
Somehow, that seems clearer and more.
Good idea.
I don't know. That would be my suggestion. Would the rest of the council be comfortable with moving in that direction? We do have a motion and a second on the table.
That sounds reasonable. I see no problem with that.
Okay. If, then that's okay with the maker of the motion, a second, we will drop the motion, and we will amend the minutes with that footnote or asterisk, and then have the clarification in the minutes for this meeting, assuming we approve those, when they come forward. So if there's a consensus on that, we'll leave it as a consensus, and then put that back on the consent calendar to be approved with the rest of the consent calendar as clarified. Seeing acceptance, now looking, we did have, I believe, what, a motion and a second for the consent calendar earlier. So I'm ready for, all in favor of the consent calendar with that clarification, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. This brings us to old business related to an affordable housing agreement, and would like community development to apprise us on this item, please.
Mayor and council, as you said, this is a approval of a development agreement. The city council has already had the first reading. This is the second reading. And staff recommends that the council waive the reading of the proposed ordinance in its entirety, direct the clerk to read by title only, and adopt on a roll call vote. And this is for the project on Cole Street for Sam Ingu Domenolco and Winnie Indo Domenolco. I was doing really well there for a minute to address affordable housing units. The project does include a five-unit apartment development on Cole Street. Thank you.
I vote for wording.
So that's to waive reading of the proposed ordinance in its entirety and direct the clerk to read by title only. So it's been moved that we do that. Been seconded. Any further discussion with that part of the action? Seeing none, this vote is to, again, direct the clerk to adopt an roll call. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Madam Clerk.
It is entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda Approving and Adopting the Development Agreement Between Sam T. Ingu Domenolco and Winnie Y. Ingu Domenolco and the City of Loma Linda. You may vote. And it passes unanimously.
Again, it seems kind of convoluted. I know, watching sometimes, that certain actions require different ways of approaching them to keep everything legal, so we're not playing games, trying to just do it in the correct manner. New business. Seeing or hearing none, reports of councilmen?
Yeah, just a quick comment. In driving around the city, which I do from time to time, of course, it looks nice. The streets are paved. Wonderful. Looks beautiful. I drive around a lot of other cities that are nearby. We look really good. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
Any other comments from council? Councilman Ziprek?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's not on the agenda tonight, but in talking with some of the staff and members of the community, one of the biggest issues around the institutional area is traffic, and particularly traffic around the parking areas. The parking areas are one of the biggest problems in the university area. And one of the thoughts that had been explored several years ago by city staff and university was looking at a potential joint effort to create some parking structures, or at least one parking structure. What I'd like to do is urge that we give general direction to staff to come back with an agenda item to look at a way of developing a substantial-sized parking structure somewhere in that area that was looked at in the past. That's something that could be a legitimate partnership, that you could have a potential bond issue, something like that. And it might do something to alleviate some of the traffic that's caused when people are hunting for spaces. They have to slow down, they're looking for a spot to open up. And anyway, that's something, I think it was about three years ago, was being explored. And I think it would be worthwhile having that come back at a future meeting.
Well, the idea was floated about 10 years ago of having a parking structure over the top of Barton Road between the Med Center and the FMO.
I think everything should be on the table. That might be thing whose time has come. But I've talked a little bit with staff, Jarvan, I've talked, talked to Mark Hifch a little bit, city clerk and others. And anyway, something that, it's not on the agenda tonight, but just like to see it come back.
Again, not taking any position on it due to potential conflict of interest, I would like to just simply comment on the conceptual ideas Councilman Peterson suggested. We, as a council and community, have discussed that option exactly, as he mentioned. In fact, I've seen the original plans when the FMO was proposed back in, what, 1971 or something, that there was going to be underground tunnel and walkways back and forth that got dropped due to budget reasons. And you think about, you know, not only the safety and pedestrians going across Barton Road, which there are all day long, the traffic implications, as well as just frankly, some of the medical situations that ambulances have to go to the FMO, whereas it could be wheeled across a corridor or some connection. I think it is very reasonable to at least discuss concepts with that and potentially other traffic and parking solutions. So certainly, discussions make sense. Any other comments on that or any other items from councilmen? If not, any reports of officers? Seeing none, city council meeting is adjourned. Sorry we took so long here.
Okay, the redevelopment agency is called to order. We have a closed session item? Was there a discussion? Did you already report on that?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Okay. General items, we have the minutes of July 28.
Move it, second.
Is there any objection? Seeing none, they're adopted. Item three, agreement for services with special counsel. Oops.
I'll move that item.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, any objection? Seeing none, that's adopted. Item number, item number four, modification of home exterior grant program for owner occupants of mobile homes. Madam Secretary.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, as you know, we have several programs for the maintenance and upgrading of homes within our community. Most of the programs are limited to persons or families of low income, and that's based upon the family size and the gross annual income of the household. One of the very popular programs is our mobile home grant program. And the current program allows for a grant of $5,000. We focus more on the health, safety issues and integrity of the structure, but we may also do interior work and cosmetic work as well. As an example, if the mobile home park is requiring a painting, we will certainly consider that. And the program is not meant to go overboard about repairs, but it is meant to preserve the home and to make the community look nice. We're to a point now where the program has been in existence for some years, and some are using it for a second time, and some even for a third time. And so we're looking at the types of things that are being requested. Many are cosmetic. We still want to be able to assist people in doing what they feel is necessary for the maintenance of their home, but at the same time, due to budget constraints, we'd like to save some as well. So we are suggesting that for a first-time user, that we provide a grant of up to $5,000. And second-time participant, up to $3,000, and a third-time participant, up to $2,000, with the caveat that should a second- or third-time participant need repairs that are considered structural, like a roof, which would exceed a $2,000 limit, that we'd be allowed to use our discretion and approve that. So with that report, we are asking that the program be modified.
Is there a motion?
Yes, I'd like to give a motion. My question is.
I'll second it.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's my motion. And how much do we pay out each year? I mean, how much are we using on this every year, just on a rough, just ballpark figure?
We're using about $60,000.
About $60,000 a year?
In mobile home.
That's in just mobile home?
Correct.
Now, what about general, the homeowner grant, I mean, the storefront? No, no, not commercial, just residential?
Just residential. There aren't that many. The entire program, which includes the mobile home grant, we do have a combination grant and loan program for single-family owner occupants. And we also have the dumpster program. And of all the programs, the dumpster and the mobile home program are the most popular. We spent about $35,000 last year on the dumpster program and closed a little over $60,000 on the mobile home.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Looking at the different priorities that we have, the one that, it just puzzled a little bit, especially with the weather forecast being over 100 degrees for the next number of days, why air conditioning would be a non-eligible item that seems like potential health and safety, and yet carpet is eligible? I don't know. You know, tonight, probably not the time to solve that, but at some future time, might.
It is prohibited by the state, by HCD.
Really?
However, those who have the combination heat and air, you must have heat. Those who have combination heat and air, we have been able to accommodate. We also work with a swamp cooler. So we do manage particularly the elderly or the young.
Just, you know.
So we do accommodate.
I appreciate the clarification. It just, again, to me, shows that some of these folks in Sacramento that may live in a coastal or northern California climate, yes, heating is more important for health and safety if you live in the desert, especially if you lived out in Coachella or Mecca or someplace. I mean, air conditioning is way more vital for health and safety. It just baffles me.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, is there any opposition to that motion? Seeing none, it's adopted. Item number five, CRA bill R-2009-15. This is an item that we've already approved on the council side in consent calendar, item number 11.
Moving.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there anybody who wants discussion? Okay. Is there any opposition to that bill? Seeing none, it is adopted. And there are no reports?
Correct. Did you cover item E? I didn't hear E. I might have missed it.
Item which?
E, oral reports from the public.
Oh, good point. Is there anybody in the public who would like to make a comment on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none. Close the public participation time. Are there any reports from councilmen? Okay, then we adjourn.
I'm sorry, I did have a quick question.
Okay.
It's not necessarily our deal related, but I have a lot of people in the community asking me, "When is the bridge going to be completed? Do we have a date?"
Yes, the bridge will be completed next month. As a matter of fact, we scheduled a ribbon cutting on September 22 at 5:00, right before our city council meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you. And we adjourn.